The Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Welcome. I am Chris Turner, your moderator for tonight. Our timekeeper for tonight and video recorder is Tom Canning. And before we go any further, Tom is the one that puts this whole thing together. He's all shook in it right now. Puts this whole thing together every year. So let's give him a big round of applause to start. Tonight's forum is for the election of Kingsland City Council Post One. Our candidates are, from my immediate left going farther down to my left are Dr. Janet Bradford, Mr. Paul Chamberlain, and Mrs. Kathy Marks. Please join me in thanking the PSA staff for accommodating our needs and setting up tonight's forum. A couple of housekeeping announcements. One is, first of all, most important, silence your cellphone, please. Restrooms are right outside the back door. Go out the door and they're to your immediate right. During the forum, to maximize time for candidate questions and answers, please refrain from applause and comment until after the candidate's final statements at the end of the forum. The questions asked tonight are the product of public input. Some questions are a consolidation of multiple similar input from the public. Tonight's Q and A routine will be as follows. Candidates will respond to questions within the designated time and rotation. Some questions will be for all candidates and others will be directed to one or more specific candidate. As I read the question aloud, the candidates will be provided a written copy of the question. Depending on the question, one to three minutes will be scheduled and announced for the individual responses. At the conclusion of the Q and A period, the audience is welcome to applaud if they choose. And the audience and candidates are welcome to converse one-on-one or in groups up until 8:00 PM, when all are asked to depart the PSA facility. That 8:00 PM deadline is a line in the sand. We've got to be out by 8:00 PM. As a reminder, posted on the door at the back of the room is the schedule for future forums during the next week, ten days, I think. Also posted are candidate contact information and online links where this information is available. The first question tonight is for Mrs. Marks. She will have two minutes to respond to the question. And the other two candidates will each have two minutes to make their comments to respond to that question. In regard to the growth we are experiencing in the city of Kingsland. The best laid plans, huh? Back to the top. Mrs. Marks, you have the first question, two minutes to respond. And each of the other two candidates will have two minutes. In regard to the growth we are experiencing in the city of Kingsland, what are your concerns? And if elected to council, what is your plan to address those concerns?
So in regard to the growth in the city of Kingsland, I am currently on the planning and zoning. So if you do or do not know, everything comes through planning and zoning first. My intention is to work very closely with the planning and zoning department and Mr. Kimball to always know what's coming through. And on city council, you always will have generally two weeks to research all projects that are coming through. I intend to work with developers and to bring things to, especially industry, to this area so we can have good paying jobs, so that we can bring good benefits to the citizens of this area, so that we can keep our high schoolers in the area, or when they go away to college, that they have a good job to come back to after college. That seems to be a major problem. These kids are leaving to college, they're getting these great degrees. They want to be close to their families, but they don't have anything to come back to. And we need to rectify that problem. We need to bring good jobs to this area. And it's not just college students. We also need to bring some type of technical school to this area because you don't have to have a degree to have a good job. We can have people who manufacture things. You know, the TRF program is fantastic. They train these kids, they put them through school, and they leave from that program and they have a good paying job. It's their choice to stay here after their allotted time, but that is what we need to do in this area. We need to bring industry here and we need to have what I consider to be controlled growth. We need to figure out where exactly things need to be placed. We don't need to put concrete plants in neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Chamberlain, you're next.
Can you hear me now? There we go. Not sure who submitted this question, but it's a very good question. And I know it's on everybody's mind. Regarding the growth we're experiencing, I'm concerned with are we ready? I'm also concerned with is it enough? Are the housing projects that we have underway going to be enough to address the 13,000 to 15,000 people that the county has estimated will come in with the new submarines? Also, is it the right kind of housing? I, you know, I'm like a lot of people that think maybe the apartment complex boom has gone far enough. It's time to, for the developers to focus on single-family homes. In, as Kathy said, in the right areas. Now, we can't tell the developers where to develop. We know that they have concerns when they put these developments in. And they want to be where the people want to be. So, you know, that's for us to help those developers get the systems in place, get the infrastructure in place to build where they need to build, but to also build adequate housing, affordable housing, and the right type of housing for the individuals that are coming in. Are we ready? Is the Kingsland Police Department ready for the influx of people? Is the fire department staffed appropriately for the influx of people? And all of the businesses that are going to come with it? So, as, you know, as a city councilman, I would work to ensure that the infrastructure is correct, that the departments are staffed and adequately equipped and ready to face the challenge of the growth before it starts, before it gets here.
Dr. Bradford, you're up.
Okay. In regard to growth, we have an average salary in Kingsland of about $51,000, which isn't, that's not bad, but it seems that everybody I talk to is working more than one job. So I'm not sure who's making the 51. And if you are a female with a graduate degree, your average salary is $76,000. So I, obviously there are a few. But I think in order to sustain the growth, we need to create jobs that have professional and/or trade growth so that you can grow as an individual, as well as growing to promote the company. And when we do that, then that gives us a ready workforce. Because we can't bring higher paying jobs to the area if we don't have people who are qualified to hold those jobs. So you've got to do something to increase the readiness of the people who are here. That may mean working with the schools, with the College of Coastal Georgia, for example, and getting some more folks in the professional areas like engineering and science. Additionally, we need some public transportation. If you don't have a car or good legs, you are out of luck in Kingsland. So we need to figure out some public transportation options. Maybe we can look at some electrifying options. But I think we do need to manage our growth by providing public transportation. And finally, infrastructure goes without saying. We've all seen all of the rain, all of the water. And so we have got to work collaboratively to correct our infrastructure. Childcare is another issue. And I just heard last night that Camden County's childcare on average is 14%, whereas in the rest of the state it's 7%. We need to fix it. Thank you. My time is up.
The second question will start with Dr. Bradford, then move to Mr. Chamberlain, and then Mrs. Marks. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to the question. Without an incumbent, voters are likely to vote based on personal knowledge, the candidate information you have shared with the public, and your past and present involvement in community activities. In the minute allowed, what have you accomplished in your community to improve your readiness to be on the city council? Dr. Bradford?
So I have improved my readiness, I think, first of all, by being a charter member of the Board of Elections and Registration when Camden County went to a combined board, because we did not have a combined board before. And I actually resigned from that board because I felt that I could make a, have more of an impact by doing something differently. So that was the first thing. I also sit on the Board of Equalization. That sign is distracting, but okay. I sit on the Board of Equalization. So if you've got issues with your property taxes, then you may very well see me at a hearing. And I attend city council meetings. I attend joint development authority meetings. I attend other meetings in the area because I think it's imperative that you know what's going on so that you can make the best decision on behalf of the citizen.
So, I showed up in Kingsland 35 years ago. And when I showed up, since then, my life has pretty much been public in the city of Kingsland. I've served as a volunteer fireman. I've worked with the sheriff's office. I've been on economic development board. I'm on the downtown development board. I've worked under three different mayors since I've been here. And I've seen the actions of all. I've been involved in city functions, city activities for the past 35 years. That's how I've maintained my readiness to be a part of the city council from day one. To stay involved with the city, to stay involved in what's going on, and listen to the people, hear what's happening, and stay at the heart of it all.
So first and foremost, I think something that's very important for me is to be on the planning and zoning board. Because, as I stated earlier, everything goes through planning and zoning first. Planning and zoning is who sends the stuff to, or the things to be approved or not, to city council. So I do know how that process works. I have been behind it. If you ask Mr. Lee Spell, or you ask Mr. Kimball, I am constantly on the phone calling them, asking questions. Is this approved? How is this going to work? How does that work? I am a researcher. I look everything up before I make any type of decision. And that's one of the things that I think is a good quality for me.
The third question starts with Mrs. Marks. She will have, in fact, that question is directed at Mrs. Marks. She will have two minutes to respond, after which each of the other two candidates will have one minute for comment and rebuttal. Via social media and other venues, people often express concerns regarding animal control issues in Kingsland. More times than not, individuals state that government response is inadequate. Even though quote-unquote "animal control" is county-funded and managed responsibility, what actions should the city of Kingsland implement to respond and mitigate occasions when unattended dogs become a momentary or repeated concern of parents, pedestrians, joggers, and leashed pets?
This is an issue that we have dealt with at our house multiple times. For whatever reason, every dog that's loose in the neighborhood decides to show up at my house in my backyard. I don't know why. What would I do about this? First, I would want to look at what is animal control's budget? Do they have enough money to do their job? And I mean a line by line, go down the line and see what they need to do. If they need more people, then we need to hire more people. If they need more, you know, leashes or whatever it is. The problem with people and their animals, if it's the first time, yeah, the dog got loose, it's okay. If it is a repeated problem, then we need to start finding that person. And we need to make it painful so that they take care of what they're supposed to do. Usually, you know, if you get a ticket, like driving a car, the third or fourth time that you get a ticket, you're not going to drive as fast. You're going to be looking for the police officers. You're going to be doing the right thing. And if we start going after the owners and make it their responsibility, make them feel uncomfortable and realize that that dog is their responsibility, and any dog, it doesn't matter how big or small it is, can and will bite. So a big dog, yeah, it'll bite you. A small dog, it will bite you also. And that could hurt, that could hurt a child. And we don't want that. We don't want that to happen to anyone. So we need to take some accountability as far as city council and look and see if the people have been trained and if they have enough of a budget to do what we expect them to do.
Mr. Chamberlain, you have one minute for comment or rebuttal.
So, we have experienced some of the same things where I live. And I think my only concern was being able to get hold of animal control on the weekend. They were not available for the weekend. But the city police department stepped up when animal control was not available. And they addressed the situation almost immediately. So I think that I would just keep that coordination going. I think we need to talk to the county, since that is their area. And maybe, as Kathy stated, they need a little more. May need another person available for the weekends so that when homeowners do experience something with a dog or, you know, another animal in their yard, we've got an immediate way to go through just animal control to take care of that situation.
I suppose I've been fortunate because in the 20-plus years I've lived in my house, I've never had the experience of an unattended dog. But with regard to the responsibility of animal control, so many of our functions appear to be understaffed. And if that's all they have to do, then okay, hold them accountable. But if animal control is doing something else to support another office that is underfunded or understaffed, then I think, as Paul said, and as Kathy as well, then you reach out to the police or another office, especially if you're concerned that the dog is posing, or whatever animal is posing a problem. I think we just need to keep things in perspective and deal with it. If it's an emergency issue, if not, then we speak with animal control and have them handle it when they can get to it. But hopefully, it's, hopefully will be sooner rather than later.
So, I think this sports complex would be fantastic for the city of Kingsland. I was listening to the conversations when it first was discussed. And the opportunities it was going to bring, the economic boom that it would bring, required more hotels than we had. It required more infrastructure. It was going to bring in sports teams from all over for summer training, or excuse me, spring training, volleyball, or excuse me, soccer teams. It was going to be huge. Unfortunately, I understand now, it's scaled back a little bit, which is unfortunate because the economy would have been greatly enhanced by what it brings. I think, I know for a fact that I am still in favor of it, at whatever size it is, because it is a start. And the areas that are set aside, this question says there hasn't been a lot of talk about it at city council level. I think that's because it's been in the developers' hands. The city has not had to get involved with the processes until very recently, when they have to modify a tad to include some properties on the other side of I-95 that are now included in the complex plan. But, yeah, I think that this is nothing but a good thing for the city of Kingsland. We need the sports center. We need the soccer fields. We need these amenities. And the economic boom that's going to come with that is also something that we really need in Kingsland.
Mrs. Marks, you have one minute.
I agree that we do need a sports complex. I think we should have a massive sports complex about two miles outside of the city proper. That way, when they have overtime games and they have the lights on till 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning, they're not going to disrupt anybody's home. They're not going to disrupt people with their sound. The people who, if they decide to build houses around that, you know what you've got. You know that that's already there. The people who have the homes where they want to build this, that's not fair to them. I don't agree with putting things such as this in the middle of neighborhoods. I believe that we would, as city council, we would need to discuss this with Mr. Gross. Maybe we can trade land with him to put this out somewhere. And then if you want to build around it, build around it. This would be perfect. This would bring so much tourism. It would bring people to the hotels. It would bring people to the restaurants. It would be a great thing. Not where they want to put it.
So I actually happened to be at the SLOST meeting when Mr. Coughlin, who is the executive director of the JDA, brought this up and talked about the potential revenue that would come from the sports complex. And the revenue side is great. However, this is the same place where we've had over-average rain. Our infrastructure is taxed to the max, as well as traffic. And sort of in line with what Kathy says, putting it in the area where it's slated to go now. We would have to work with Mr. Gross and whoever his partners are to have a comprehensive planning effort. I mean, there are people who get paid to tell you where you put certain things. And so we need to make sure that the experts concur that the best location for this sports complex is where it is. We don't make more land, but if it's, if that's where it, that's the only place we have to put it, then so be it. But I don't know that that much research has gone into it. Thank you.
Question number five is directed to Dr. Bradford. She will have two minutes to respond, after which the other two candidates will each have one minute for comment or rebuttal. Kingsland continues to draw positive tax revenue from gas stations, hotels, and food venues. Is that a strong enough tax base? Or should the city be actively promoting a different kind of commercial revenue base? If so, what are your ideas or suggestions?
So, the proportion of the tax digest that is borne by residents, folks that are homeowners in Kingsland is 73%. Not as high as St. Mary's, which is about 82%, but 73% is still pretty high. So I do think we need to attract some additional commercial entities that will reduce that burden on the taxpayers. I don't know that our millage rate will go down, but at least, hopefully, we won't carry as much of the burden. One thing I think that is a good thing that we're working on is the industrial park and bringing in business at the industrial park at Exit 7. And I think because the average age of a Kingsland resident is 33 years old. Let's say if you live in Kingsland for 30 years... say if you live in Kingsland for 30 years, then you're still in your early 60s. They are the digital generation. I think the city of Kingsland should do something to actively promote e-commerce with our median-aged residents. Because they, I've talked to younger people, they work, they go to school, they don't party, they're working multiple jobs, and they, almost all of them have some sort of e-commerce revenue. They can talk to you, you know, you think you're talking to Zuckerberg, when you're talking to one of them about, oh, well, that's, that revenue stream, I do this, you know, while I'm working, and I do this while I'm sitting in class. So, I think we really need to look at options that are available to us to enhance the e-commerce revenue that our citizens can do from any place in Kingsland. Thank you.
Mr. Chamberlain, you're next.
So, Kingsland does work to build more of a tax base than just food venues, gas stations, and hotels. Kingsland works with the Joint Development Authority. They've established, together, they've established opportunity zones, enterprise zones. Changes have been made recently to the industrial park, and it's an ongoing effort, but we're starting to see the fruits of that labor, with the new type of industry that's already come into the industrial park. Yeah, we always want to continue to get a more diverse tax base, and with that, we need more people. With more people comes more business. So, Kingsland works actively to accomplish that, and I would say that we're going to continue to work with JDA to keep that momentum going.
So, back to the same question, I think we need industry. I think we need large commercial. The more commercial you have, the lower our tax rates as homeowners will be. That is proven, it is known. The industry areas that have to come in, such as Mr. Gross's latest development area, he will be putting in roads, he will be bringing in doctor's offices and such. All of that is being taxed at a commercial rate. Commercial rate is much higher than our homeowner rates are. I also think that we need to define who we are as a city. Are we just an older group of retired people who have kids? Are we military? Are we, what are we? And why do people want to come here? We need to figure out something to have people want to come here, such as a sports complex, or something, not off the top of my head, something for a very specific reason. Why do they want to come here? They come here for Cumberland Island, well, that's St. Mary's. That doesn't serve Kingsland.
Question number six is addressed to all three of the candidates, starting with Mrs. Marks. You will each have one minute to respond. As a Kingsland resident, it appears that many council decisions are made ahead of time behind closed doors. Why is there rarely, hardly ever, general discussion about agenda items? What would you do differently if you were on council? Mrs. Marks?
I have repeatedly said this. Council members do not know what you're thinking, or what your questions are by osmosis. You have to reach out to them. Send them an email, go to the council meetings, ask questions, speak to them directly. They can, they, there's too many people to know exactly what you're thinking. They do want to hear it, they're on Facebook, they have email addresses, many of them have phones that are listed. Give them a call, speak to them, let them know your concerns, and as far as the ahead-of-time thing, I have heard that repeatedly. I don't know that that's necessarily true, but I do think that they need to hear from you directly as a concerned citizen. We all need to hear from you directly as a concerned citizen.
Dr. Bradford, you're next.
Well, I, the state of Georgia has sunshine laws, and it prohibits discussion from any official entity, more than three people. It doesn't matter where you are, you're just not allowed to do it. So, I'm assuming that our city council is sufficiently aware that they're not breaking any laws. So, now, how do you get around that? Well, you do your homework in advance. I think that's part of the commitment you make to being on the city council. If you look, when you get to city council meeting, you can get an agenda at the door, it's two pages, rarely more than two pages. If you go online to the Agenda Center, the Agenda Packet may be a hundred pages. So, the information is there, and I'm sure it does look to the average citizen that this is stuff that's been discussed behind closed doors, but I want to take the high road and say that our city council members have reviewed the information in advance. If they've had questions, then they've gotten with the city manager, and by the time they're there for the vote, they're comfortable that all of their concerns have been addressed.
So, both great explanations, and I won't repeat. But rarely do I ever see Kingsland City Council go into executive session, which is behind closed doors. So, when you attend city council meetings, they open with audience to the, granting audience to the public. You can talk about anything that's on the agenda. You can talk about anything that concerns you regarding the city of Kingsland. When each agenda item is addressed, they wait for a motion, a second, and then they go into general discussion, where any other discussion about that item has to be made by the council members, and then they take a vote. Our city council members are very well-versed at what they do, and they're, they make sure that when they come to that meeting, they have all the information already in front of them that they needed to make a well-educated decision.
Question number seven is directed at Mr. Chamberlain. He will have two minutes to respond. After that, each of the other two candidates will have one minute for comment or rebuttal. Do you think Kingsland is getting its fair share out of the proposed SPOST 9 negotiations with the county? What is proposed in SPOST 9 that you think is most beneficial to Kingsland residents? Will you support the approval of the continuation of SPOST? Mr. Chamberlain?
So, the details of SPOST 9 negotiations, I am not familiar with, so I'm not going to be able to say that Kingsland is or is not getting their fair share out of this. I know that the city of Kingsland and the council members, the mayor, do not have a problem talking with the county about what we're getting out of SPOST, and if it's, if they don't feel it's fair, then they make that well-known. So, again, not familiar with all the details of SPOST 9, so I'm not able to say whether we're getting enough or not.
Dr. Bradford, you're next.
So, back to that same SPOST meeting I went to, there was a lot of discussion, and the only decision was to have another meeting. But SPOST 8 went into effect the 1st of July of 2019, and it will end June 30th, 2025. We're already paying that tax, everybody pays that tax. If you buy something in Kingsland, then you pay the SPOST tax. So, if you don't pay it, so instead of paying five cents tax, you pay four cents tax. You're not going to miss that penny, but out of SPOST 8, there was $55 million in the SPOST, and Kingsland got 10.6 million of that. So, for not missing that one cent, then I think it's, we should certainly put the SPOST 9 back on the ballot, and get, if it gets approved, then yes, we get the benefit of that revenue. Thank you.
Honestly, I don't know about the SPOST 9 negotiations. I think that this is something that I would probably have to research more before I was willing to make any type of a vote on this. As a city council member, I would definitely like to know what benefit, what percentage, and based on what Ms. Bradford is saying, if that's the amount of money that we would be getting, then yes, I would vote for it, depending on, obviously, how citizens speak to me about it. But one cent, I don't think that's going to kill any of us. Thank you.
Question number eight is directed at Mrs. Marks. She will have one minute to respond, then each of the other two candidates will have one minute for comment or rebuttal. Do you think PSA is adequately maintaining parks in Kingsland, and if not, should the city step in?
So far, the parks that I have seen do look like they're okay. This would be something that I think would need to be gone around, literally, to every single park, and every one of the city council members would need to evaluate this. And if it was going to be taken back from the city, or taken back from PSA, then I believe that the money that is funded should come back also.
Mr. Chamberlain?
I think PSA is doing a lot better job than they, than they did a few years ago. The parks in Kingsland seem to be in very good condition. They, there are some of the outline county parks that probably still need a little bit of work, but I would say for the city of Kingsland, our parks have been maintained by PSA very well over the past few years.
I think that as a city, we need to honor whatever agreements we have with the PSA. If the PSA is responsible, then let's hold the PSA responsible, rather than stepping in, otherwise, why bother? So, as Mr. Chamberlain said, the parks in Kingsland do tend, appear to be pretty well-maintained. I wouldn't say that's the case around the county, but they are pretty well-maintained in Kingsland. So, I don't see that there is a reason why, at this point, that the city should step in. Thank you.
The ninth question is directed at Dr. Bradford. She will have two minutes to respond. Each of the other two candidates will have one minute for comment or rebuttal. With an ever-increasing rainy season, flooding occurs in more locations each year. Are the usual methods for preventing flooding adequate, or should there be some areas in which the council should simply not approve new construction?
So, this goes back to relying on your experts. I had the privilege, I'll call it now that I'm retired, of managing construction at Fletsey for more than 10 years. Every new construction project that we had required NEPA documentation, the National Environmental Protection Agency. So, I think if we are not doing that, and I can't imagine that we're not, we should certainly collaborate with NEPA to make sure that when new construction is approved, the appropriate environmental protection documents have been submitted, and the area is approved for construction, and if it is not, then we adjust accordingly. Sorry, okay. But you don't just approve construction, and I don't think you rely on the council to approve construction without having all of that supporting documentation. So, again, I go to the experts. Engineers go to school to be able to tell you what you can and cannot do, and where you can and cannot do it, and I think that's just a function of my having a federal background, and knowing that I couldn't do certain things without complying with federal rules. So, again, NEPA, as long as we're in compliance with NEPA, then we should be able to approve new construction. If we have not gone through that process, then we need to stop it and make sure that we are in compliance, and sometimes that means you do an offset. If you're going to destroy wetlands here, well, not wetlands, because you can't destroy wetlands, but if you're going to build here, then you have to offset someplace else. So, I think there are rules in place to account for this, but new construction is, should be subject to the rules that have been put in place by the Environmental Protection Agency.
Mrs. Marks, you're next.
This, to me, goes back to planning and zoning. This, I feel, needs to be written into ordinances, and if the ordinances are in place first, then city council does not have to worry about whether they're going to approve it or not, because planning and zoning will not approve it to start with. I spoke to city council recently with multiple ideas about how to help the flooding issues in this area, and I'm hoping that I can keep speaking to them about it to be able to get some of these things implemented. I found multiple grants that are available, and I'm hoping that we can go ahead and get some of this grant money, because we do have grant writers who can do these things. But do I think that they should not approve it? If it is an area that is proven to repeatedly flood and cause issues with other established homes, absolutely, I think we should say no.
We could use a lot, we could use a lot more than one minute to talk about this topic, but, so, the city floods in a lot of areas. A lot of it, we can't fix the problems that were built 20, 30 years ago. The developers built where they did, and we can just now go in and try and fix what they did, what they, what they did in the wrong place. The city council has denied development in areas that did not, would not drain appropriately. So, they have gone in with the information from planning and zoning, with the information from the engineers, and said, no, you cannot build those houses in this area. So, it is something that's active. The, there's a lot that can be done with the flooding. There's a lot of natural drainage that has to be maintained, and I think that as a city councilman, I would look toward getting somebody dedicated to working on those areas, keeping an eye on those areas, that stop sign.
On behalf of the candidates, thank you to the gyreene in the back row for bringing them some water. Question number 10 is directed at Mr. Chamberlain. He will have one minute to respond. Each of the other two candidates will have one minute for comment or rebuttal. There has been some renovation to the old Kingsland downtown area, but it still seems kind of desolate. What should the city do to revitalize it? Should we just focus on the I-95 business areas?
So, downtown development is my home. There has been a lot of work done to revitalize the old downtown area, the downtown. The Downtown Development Authority has worked on the infrastructure, lighting, the overlay ordinances, getting everything ready for businesses to move in, to make downtown Kingsland a more business-friendly and a more people-friendly area. If you walk downtown, nearly every building that is rentable is full. We have businesses coming in every day saying, what do you have available? We need more, we need more buildings downtown. But what's there? If it's rentable, it's rented, and it's in high demand. So what the city can do is encourage investors to come in and build downtown. And by doing that, we have to get people downtown. You have to have the people before the businesses will show up.
Dr. Bradford, you're next.
So with regard to the renovation, and I'll go back to my experiences working with engineers and architects. You need a design guide. You, when you come into downtown Kingsland, you don't know you're in downtown Kingsland unless you know that it's downtown Kingsland. There's nothing that distinguishes downtown from the rest of the area. So for example, we see McDonald's, we expect arches. If you go to McDonald's on Hilton Head, there's no arches, because Hilton Head has design criteria that will not allow McDonald's to put up arches. McDonald's looks just like everything else that's there. So I think we need to invest in the experts and say, this is what we want downtown to look like, so that there is, you know, it's, it's a gradual change. When you get to downtown, you know, oh, this must be downtown, and here's this area, and things look like downtown. And then, once you're gone, then, okay, I'm not in downtown any longer, and there's a stop sign.
So yes, there has been some renovation to the downtown area, and as Ms. Bradford said, you can't distinguish it. Personally, one of the things that I see as the biggest hindrance to the downtown area is that we don't own seventeen. We can't do anything with seventeen. We can't widen it, we can't fix it. It is owned by Georgia Department of Transportation. We don't get to do anything with it. The buildings are right on top of the road. We need to either go up, and one of the biggest things is that we need to figure out parking. I'm sorry, I thought that was the stop sign. But I do think that we need to define what we want to do with the downtown area. Do we want it to look like it's a 50s downtown area? Do we want it to look like back in Stefan's days? We need to be very specific and then have all of the buildings to look that way, if that is what the end result is that we want done. But it needs to be in agreement with the business owners, with the city, with planning and zoning, and it has to be everybody involved, the DVA, everybody.
Question eleven is directed to Mrs. Marks. She will have two minutes to answer, after which each of the other two candidates will have one minute apiece for comment or rebuttal. Concerns have been raised that the city is allowing the cut, cutting down of so many trees for new residential apartments, that we are losing natural protection against increased flooding. Is that a reasonable concern? If necessary, what is the alternative?
This is exactly what I went to city council for about. Yes, we are allowing too many trees to be cut down for development. In my research of this, there are many ways to address this as far as this affects flooding. This is not just cut down trees and it doesn't look pretty anymore. This very much directs, affects flooding. Those ugly pine trees that nobody seems to like and everybody wants to cut down, those pine trees drink eighty gallons of water per day. You definitely want those around these, these new developments to bring up the water, to get the water out of these developments. We, my neighborhood is directly experiencing flooding issues because of clearcutting for an apartment complex. The people across the street have had water up in their yards all the way to their houses. Yes, this is a problem, and we need to fix it. One of the ways that we can also fix it is to not just let the culverts grow in and let junk get all stuck in them, and we need to put in concrete culverts, and we need to be very, very intentional about where we direct that water to, whether it's a canal, a lake, a retention pond, whatever it is. If we have to dig retention ponds so that the water runoff goes where we want it to go and not where it's just going to go by itself up into other people's yards and cause problems for their structures. So yes, I, this was something that I also had said to city council, was that maybe we need to seriously consider putting in an ordinance that these developers need to use one of the fourteen types of water hog trees that we have in zone nine. We need to address that. And these trees are all beautiful, they're not very expensive, and most nurseries will give you a one-year guarantee. If they die, we send it back, we let them know, and we get our money back.
Yeah. Mr. Chamberlain.
Okay, so cash crop in Camden County for a long time has been pine trees, all right? Slash pines do not make a good neighborhood. Those trees, most of them have to come down, because as we've seen during winds, these things snap off at the tops, they snap off at the bottoms. They are not a very sturdy tree. When they come down, though, you know, these neighborhoods need to replace them, or the developers need to replace those trees with some of the trees that do drink the water. There are different variants of pines, willows, oaks. There are a lot of trees out there that look great in the development, look great in the neighborhood, that will not come on, down on top of your house every time the wind blows. So trees need to come out, be replaced, and appropriate trees put in.
I wholeheartedly agree. Trees can be used to reduce stormwater runoff, flooding, and they also prevent soil erosion. So I, I agree with what Kathy said earlier. It should be a code requirement. If you are going to do multi-unit construction, then you must also implement sustainable, environmentally friendly landscaping, whether that's trees or whatever it ends up, there are, there are other things you can do other than planting trees. Certainly, that's probably the biggest bang for the buck. But, but land, curbside landscaping, there are a number of things. Once again, go to the experts. I believe in going to the experts. Go to the, go to the architects who are familiar with designing these kinds of, or designing landscaping, you know, and, and have them give options to these multi-unit construction owners. But if you're going to do multi-unit construction, then you will do some sort of sustainable landscaping in addition to. Thank you.
Next question is number thirteen, is directed to all three candidates. Each of them will have one minute to respond. Mrs. Marks, it's first. In your closing statement, please discuss, excuse me, I got, what would be your two top priorities if elected? Skipping twelve, we're running out of time.
One of my personal biggest concerns in, in Kingsland is the drainage issues, and that would be a very big priority for me. It would all, another thing would be is to look at the budget, line by line. If that took fifteen, twenty hours, then we'll sit there and we'll look at it line by line and see where, what, what departments actually need what money? What, what do we need? Look, let's look at the necessities, cut out some necessities. Let's see if there's ways that we can reduce costs for the citizens of, of Kingsland. And of course, I would always be willing to listen, to see what people's concerns are. That's my biggest thing. I'm always willing to listen. I always want to hear what people have to say, and again, I don't know by osmosis.
Dr. Bradford, you're next.
Okay, my top first priority would be to relook at the budget. I, I know it was approved and nobody made any comments about the budget, and, and I didn't either, so I hold myself accountable. But the police department, the, the budget for the police department was cut this year. And given that we've had now two incidents in the state of Georgia with our students in schools, we can't afford to wait until after the fact and something happens, and then you try to place a dollar value on the life of the child who's been affected, or the children, or the families who've been affected because we didn't have enough school resource officers. So that would be the first thing. Again, I'm agreeing with, with Ms. Marks. Let's do a line-by-line review of the budget, and I, and I actually did that today. So that would be the first thing. The other one, of course, is, is infrastructure. We have got to ad, better address the infrastructure, and it's not something that we can do in a vacuum, even though we, we have city lines. I'm, I'm finish my point. We have city lines, but, but Camden is a big area, and we need to work collaboratively to address the infrastructure issue. Thank you.
We're jumping back to number twelve. This question is directed, there's a check mark here. Mr. Chamberlain, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, top two priorities if elected. Number one priority is going to make sure that the residents, citizens of Kingsland, know that I am available and working for them. Second priority is going to be ensuring that the departments are adequately staffed and equipped to meet the needs that lie ahead of us. We've got a, a big influx of people coming. We've got a lot of businesses coming, and we have to be ready to meet that, that challenge head-on. And it's going to be something that has to be incremental. We can't wait till the last minute to make it happen.
Now we're back to question twelve. This question is directed to all three candidates. You will each have one minute to respond. We start with, Dr. Bradford, a common concern in Kingsland is places to go and activities for young people. Do you agree? If you do, as a council member, what will you do to address and resolve this concern?
I do agree. I've got a twelve-year-old granddaughter who now has to either go to Brunswick or go to Uly to go to the movies. So I, we do need to have some things for our young people to do. Now, how do we fix that? Honestly, I, I don't know. Maybe we, we get another movie company or theater company to take over the old movie theater. But we, we need to find some relatively inexpensive ways that our young people can have recreation. We're back to the, the sports complex perhaps, or until we get the sports complex, we've got the, the soccer field over off, whatever, Kings Bay Road. But yes, we do need some recreation, because as my mother used to say, an idle mind is the devil's workshop. And so we need to make sure we keep our children productive and busy. Thank you.
Mr. Chamberlain.
So I'm gonna add to this. It's not just common concern that places to go and activities for young people, it's for everybody. We do have a lot of parks. We have a lot of great parks, as we talked about, being maintained well by the PSA. We are, Kingsland is in the process of building the lawn, which, if you're familiar with it, it's going to have a covered arena, it will have areas for festivals, areas for, that are available to rent, and that's something that we don't have to go to Waycross, we don't have to go to Brunswick. We can bring those activities here that would be suitable for that. But it's hard to tell an investor, you need to bring a theater here. But we can work to make and keep Kingsland a business-friendly environment where those investors look and say, hey, you know what? We've got the population there. Maybe we can put a theater and it be successful. Maybe we can put in a park and it be successful.
Absolutely, I agree with this. How could I resolve this? Well, I started working on this with Mr. Gross. When he came to us with the Interstate Transitional Zone ordinance that we just recently passed, when we stepped aside, I said to him, you need to put in something for kids. You need to build something like a Dave and Buster's, minus the alcohol, so we don't have a problem like that. Build the things for the kids. And he was in complete agreement, and he said that they are talking to people currently. This is something that they're trying to bring in with this new industrial park, and we, you know, everybody, not just city council, we all recognize that this is something that needs to be done. We all need somewhere to go. People who come here and rent a hotel, they go to Jacksonville, they go down to Uly, they go to Fernandina. Why? Because there's nothing to do here, you know? Ten o'clock at night, they could go sit at a movie theater and then go back to their hotel. Thank you.
In your closing statement, and this is addressed to all three candidates, you'll each have two minutes to respond. In your closing statement, please discuss subjects that are important to you that have not been covered by the forum questions. And why will the residents and business owners in Kingsland be best served with you on the city council? Mr. Chamberlain, you're up first.
I was kind of surprised that crime did not come up in any of the questions that were presented. Kingsland, two years ago, was listed as the second safest city in the state of Georgia. This year, we didn't make the top twenty-five. Something happened. I'm not sure what that is. I've had discussions with the police chief. We have a large influx of homeless, or maybe they were here to start and, and they are now, now homeless. Homeless crime has become a problem in Kingsland. These are the things, living downtown, we see a lot. We see crime. We see things that some of, you know, people living in some other neighborhoods with gates don't see. And those are the things to me that need immediate attention, so that Kingsland can be a safe community. Downtown can be a safe area to walk. We can have those areas for kids to go and know that when they leave our houses, they're going to be safe, and they're going to come home the same way they left. Those are the items that, again, I'll reiterate, to have an adequately staffed police force, adequately staffed fire departments, adequately staffed, and those, those departments being adequately staffed fire departments, adequately staffed, and those, those departments being paid at a competitive wage to keep them in place, to keep them here. Those are the things that, as a councilman, I'm focused on working on. Yield the rest of my time.
I think the coverage of the questions was very good. I think it was very generalized, minus crime, as, as Mr. Chamberlain said. Why do I thi, why would I think that business owners and citizens should vote for me? Because I listen, because I care, because I live here in this community. It's not like I live down the road in Jacksonville. I am right here every single day. I drive the same roads, I see the same potholes. Those are things that concern me. I will be very quick to point out to Public Works, or whoever it would be, "Hey, we got a pothole over there, we need to get that fixed." And I will call and harass them until it does get fixed, because anybody who knows me knows that I will harass you until I get it done. And my daughter's laughing. But I, I listen, I care. I wouldn't be here if I didn't. There's no glory in this. I, I'm not interested in being in politics. One of my daughters was speaking to a longtime friend, and this lady said to my daughter, "I'm really surprised that your mom is getting into politics." And my daughter came home and told me that, and I was like, "I never thought of this as politics. I always thought of this as service." And that's what this is about for me.
If there's one thing that we didn't maybe cover, that I would at least like to mention in passing, and I think I alluded to it earlier, is that the median age of a Kingsland resident is 33. I find that just utterly hard to believe. At my age, 33 is really young. But given that that is what the statistics say, then I think we need to work on focusing on those 33-year-olds, and let's figure out what can we do to get them more involved in the community. And that leads me to the issue of apathy and pushing information rather than pulling information, just looking, one would think that the room would be crowded, it is not. So we have a, there are a lot of people who are interested, but there are other things going on, and folks just aren't here. We have transparent information, but you have to pull it because the city doesn't push it out to you. It's there, but you got to go look for it. So I think we just need to sort of make it a tad bit more accessible. So having said that, I think that as a member of the city council, I'm best suited for city council, because I've spent the past 20-plus years of my professional life making the kinds of decisions that city council members make. Again, I alluded to having worked at Fletzy for the past 20 years, I served as budget officer, so I really am interested. I looked at the budget today, and I saw in one fiscal year, the actual amount was listed, and then you look at the next budget, that prior fiscal year, that amount had changed. I, I'm sure there's reason for it, but it's something that I would certainly be interested in discussing. So I have some expertise in some of those areas, and I hope that my being on city council would bring those experience with a positive impact, rather than coming in and being anything other than positive. Thank you.
I wish all three of these folks would move to St. Mary's, where the median age is 66. That concludes our, our forum tonight. We owe these three candidates a huge, huge round of applause for sitting here tonight, and especially for stepping up to run. As of right now, we have 45 minutes that we can still be in this room, and you're welcome to speak with the candidates as you have the opportunity or choose. Thank you, and have a good evening.